So I kind of went into our public safety department reports. So some of the items we have was kind of on the list here. So a discussion and update on pedestrian safety. So I know one thing that we've discussed previously was the, I know it's gone up on spread now, so things are getting a little nicer and whatnot, but it was some sort of plan for rethinking the crosswalks because I feel like that's part of the issue with not having clear.
Yeah, that's been, CH has got, is working on a plan for that. He's going to do it, basically start at the busiest intersections and work out from there, the ones that are most pedestrian, pedestrian use.
We may have any questions about pedestrian safety. That's all we got with our next step that we discussed previously.
I'm sure the chief was waiting on anything from the last report or anything else.
The one that was waiting on was, Ford and Dyer needs to replace his traffic counter slash speed checker. The company that we were using went out of business, so it's off, I don't even function anymore. He said somewhere around the area of about $2,000 if we're interested in doing that. And that's not going to specifically help with the pedestrian safety, but it was all kind of traffic.
Well, I think, I think if people are more aware of their speed, I mean, they're having more time to stop, so indirectly it helps pedestrian safety, so. Would that be like an AM rad or something like that?
No, it's actually two hoses.
Okay.
Go back to the computer I talked, it gets downloaded afterwards. We're also going to be participating in a grant later in the year for pedestrian safety.
That's great.
And indirectly, it's called clicker or ticket, but it's a traffic stop to make sure people have their seatbelts on, which that may also be able to be run in the same area.
Cool. Excellent.
I have one thing to add that I just received today, actually, which was a lead on a program with the Department of Health called Walk Works. Walk Works funds the development of active transportation plans and policies. For the fifth consecutive year, Walk Works is able to provide funding to assist municipal entities with the development of active transportation plans and policies. By helping to fund these efforts, Walk Works continues to aim to establish new and improved pedestrian, bicycle, and public transit, transportation systems, thereby funding its objective by increasing active friendly routes and connectivity to everyday destinations. They fund things like active transportation plans, complete streets policies, and zero, the zero.
Project Zero.
Project Zero.
Zero.
So it could be something that we could look into, the list of 2021, 22 grantees, Borough of Akron, Borough of Forest Hills, Borough of Indiana, Borough of Corningville, 2020, 2021 grantees, Borough of Forest, Forest Hills, Borough of Quaker Town, and then Borough Township was a grantee back in 2018, 2019. So something to consider.
Would you mind forwarding that?
Sure.
And then, once you have a more information, maybe you'll reach out to people around and see what they did in this whole process. But I kind of move back into our next discussion here, the truck traffic and prohibitions. I know, Chief, that's something your department has been pretty diligent on, is enforcing the illegal truck terms, enforcing the regulations on the illegal truck terms and some of the guys in here, guys pulling in quite a few trucks. Do you have anything you'd like to mention in regards to truck traffic?
No, they're pretty much making that a priority when they're not doing anything else and they're out of control.
Excellent. What section of the report would that, like, fall in here, whether it's calls or those complaints?
I mean, when the.
In your job, please, Chief, report.
I think so.
Yeah. And does it just like rank like a big bucket?
Yeah, I think they're, because they want to subtract it off, I mean.
Okay.
Charlie doesn't really like it, but. Most of it's going to, they're going to fall under a grievance, the traffic control laws.
Okay, because they didn't follow the sign.
Correct.
Okay.
President Miller, she went on last night right after the, the heartbeat. That was, it was an interesting situation. He was, the truck driver was a little upset with me because I was standing there at road looking at him like this, and then Officer Shutt flipped the lights on behind him. So that was a, that was a pretty quick turnaround. And the sign is fixed, by the way. They got it on right away this morning and put the sign back up, so.
Um.
It's how it all works that way.
Well, thank you for your, for all your sleep, nothing get out there. And thank you, Chief, for your diligence to enforcing the truck traffic violations. So in the spirit of traffic, we're talking about our traffic cycles and left turn areas. I know previously Councilman Buick had discussed and desired how that's looked at. I know, and then Engineer Golsky, he said that a couple of years ago, he did a huge study about the cycling of those traffic lights, so I don't know, I don't know, maybe we'll start with Councilman Buick, if there's something that you'd like to say about that. Thank you. If I could go backwards for one second, where are the truck prohibitions turning? Just quickly, is it?
It might be easier to ask where they can.
Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So a wall on Main and now?
Right.
Any direction without being on the wall line?
Right. All four directions they can.
No turn.
No turns.
York Street, Main.
York and Main, I believe they can turn right. You know, I think they can change to a destination.
They can turn eastbound off of York on the Main. They can turn north on York off of Main.
Yeah, so there's a couple ways they can go. York and Main, where it's wider. York and Simpson, they're prohibited. Market and Simpson, they're prohibited. And I'm, I think they're prohibited at the square as well.
At the square going.
Think east.
East. East off of Market. They have to follow 641 through town.
Yeah.
And that's the truck route. We, Penda would not allow us to, or not 641, 114.
114 here.
Yeah. They would tend to not allow us to prohibit them from turning on that route. No turns at all at Main and Market and Simpson, and there's very limited turns at Simpson and York, and the final one is Shepherdstown and Simpson and Walnut Street. There are supposed to be no right turns at any of those intersections, only lefts.
Just curious, because there was quite a flurry of Facebook activity recently on this topic. Is that written anywhere?
Yeah, that's what Penda told us, that that's what they wanted to sign up.
We have a list.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a list.
We can get one.
Can we? All right, that would be wonderful, Chief, if you wouldn't mind. And then, the question came to me from a couple of citizens about whether you can do remains or trucks doing that. I really didn't have any answer.
They, license plate number, state license plate and the state, and they can give that information to us and we can follow that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner, I'm going to do a spark plug in quickly. So I don't know, you know, lovely for that.
I'm ready, buddy.
But I was just thinking more and more about this issue, and I know that turn lanes just can't magically appear.
Correct.
If they could, I'm hoping that would already have been done or suggested, and I don't know that that has been.
You keep going, because I have a suggestion for you that I'll get.
Okay.
Things thrown at me four later.
Awesome. Obviously, we are for left turns at strategic locations, possibly York Street and Main, York Street and Simpson, Walnut Street and Main. I mean, that would really alleviate a tremendous amount of difficulty. I know it could cause unintended consequences, I get that. I'm not an engineer. I'm loving to hear whatever you have.
So a couple things, I had a good conversation with Paul Wood. Paul Wood is our traffic engineer who actually worked on the last study, and I did check with him. That study was done, the study was done in 2017 and implemented in 2019, so it was right before COVID kind of hit. And that took our existing system, which is controlled by computers sitting up in the police office essentially, and it talks to a number of signals within the corridor. So, but it still brought all the technology in the fact that we load in a couple of programs that basically say, hey, at this time, it should run this way, and at this time, it should run this way, and at this time, it should run this way. It does not necessarily react like some of the other newer ability, they call them adaptive systems, like they can actually see via cameras and an artificial brain processes and say, okay, well, I should let, you know, Market Street go because they're the big bag on Market Street to hold other things up. So that technology is out there now. But it all boils down back to the fact of capacity issue, that just the shortage of the number of lanes to be able to, you know, get a person to get into a left lane so that they don't block traffic that's trying to go through, or something like that. Same, it's the same issue. It's like robbing Peter to pay Paul. If you're going to put a turn, like you add a phase by putting that left turn signal, the dedicated left turn in, you're taking away time from the other, you know, phases in the system, so then you have that potential of impacting other legs on them through traffic. So there is no good answer, you know, at the end of the day of what you want to spend. Now, Paul did say, you know, regarding coming out of COVID, that obviously during COVID traffic was completely, you know, from a traffic engineer's perspective, you know, depressed, obviously. But people's patterns have changed too. You know what I mean? You know, we're not necessarily going to stop at the roads on the way to work because we're not going to work anymore, you know what I mean? Like those kinds of things. We're making those trips as primary trips, and they're coming at different times. So, you know, I think as a, I'll say a profession, you know, they're seeing that those patterns have changed. So the question becomes, do you want to go out and, and I suppose you, the council, would want to go out and restudy, for example, the entire area, to see if those counts are dramatically different from what we saw previously. I don't know what the answer will be, frankly, because, you know, we have a lot of through traffic in town, so that, I'm guessing, would probably still be the same. You know, I don't think that's going to change drastically. So it then boils back to trying to figure out that best target cycle with the parameters that Penda allows to be able to do that. You know, we just can't go, all of those intersections that we kind of talk about in our signalizer are state intersections, so Penda has to say in terms of what we can't get up against. So they're not going to let us, most likely, you know, just add a left turn signal that's going to have a deleterious effect on their through traffic to improve ours, so. But they, they're in the game, I mean, there's given game.
So the through traffic really has to do with rush hour, it has to do with direction of traffic.
Yeah.
So we know that we're running, the traffic's headed east and the afternoon's headed west, but we know where, it's really one lane on one road that causes the biggest problems at any given point in time. If it were shown that a new system would help alleviate a lot of that difficulty, because if giving the entire town, it has to give you a very, very bad name. Consumers don't want to come down where they're going to get jammed up for what they think are going to be hours. What type of ballpark construct are you looking at for replacement for a system upgrade?
Okay, so let's look at, like, different levels, okay? So if we did, like, at the lowest level, we just did a, you know, a recount and kind of, we already have a map and a model that exists, so we could probably, you know, $15,000, you kind of figure out what, you know, what it looks like today compared to what it was five years ago. If you went to, you know, gutting your entire system, if you were, I think gutting, meaning control, and replacing with some, you know, adaptive, it's probably a million dollar project, you know? So there is like the span of what you could potentially take a look at. You know, there's things like one-way couplets, removal of parking, you know, all of these types of things that we consider to provide the additional capacity, you know? And I don't, I don't agree with you about that, because, you know, that's just a circular loop we talked about in the past about, you know, there is no desire to remove parking. There's no desire to potentially go to a one-way couplet, which obviously has a pretty significant impact on traffic pattern in general in town, but, you know, those are other things. That adaptive system I talked about, we did that for Hanover, you know, kind of a very similar situation, just restricted by capacity. They saw, like, a very minimal improvement, like 5%, you know, in total delay, which is a total amount of time delay, only like 5% for, you know, a huge investment. And so it was like, they spent all this money and all these results, and at the end of the day, they didn't get them, you know what I mean? Really because you just can't push enough cars through town.
Wouldn't that more removal of parking give us a larger factor?
Yes. However, once again, I think that we have to look at that pretty close, because there's some of the congested areas already, they already don't have, you know, those areas. It'd be more like if you're going to do that one-way couplet through town, one way, you take the parking off those streets, and then you get to add another lane. You know, that's the kind of capacity we're talking about adding.
I think that's kind of what it is, though.
I think it is too. Throw it out there, so, you know, all of those kinds of things.
Thank you.
And I'll throw it out there once again, you know, I don't think it would be outplace to do it, but at the end of the day, if you're looking at a bigger plan, you know, the 50-year plan, you know, you're talking about taking properties to be able to do this.
Thank you for that insight. So that brings us to our final one from the public safety department reports. Wait, one second.
Jubilee Day.
Yeah, Jubilee Day.
This is more of an idea for the new, since, since we've had a Jubilee Day, that some people might not be aware of what all we do in preparation for Jubilee Day and the aftermath of Jubilee Day. And to bring the light, as Councilman Miller said, President Miller said, the lack of personnel that we have at this point in time. We can hire people ready, have people ready, supply temporary workers for us, but they're expensive and they may show up, they may not, it's hard to tell. So there's, this is a breakdown of what we go through on the ramp up to Jubilee Day and basically the tear down afterwards. And it involves the entire borough staff in one form or another. I mean, when Glenn was here, Glenn, it was Glenn and I was throwing recycling. This year, it'll probably be Barb as the recycling coordinator handling that duty, you know, and if she can't find anybody else, I mean, I'll give her some help and get it taken care of. But the big one is probably the street sweeper at the end of the night. But if we, we can, I'll start searching now for a rental for that night with the driver, and we'll figure out where to go from there, so. But this is just a, this is an idea of what we do. There's probably, we're probably going to have to pull more sewer plant workers, waste water treatment plant workers, into help with the cleanup phase, because four guys are not enough to do what we do after Jubilee Day is over.
So, um, gee, I mean, would the janitors who assist in the, I would pull in people from it to help with Jubilee?
Yeah, this is, I mean, this, like I said, this is 10 o'clock, 7:30 to 10 o'clock tonight. I mean, we're going to pay overtime, but.
Is the, is the chamber that's built for that?
I think mine, my time and Glenn's time are the only ones we weren't built for because being salaried, we weren't technically on the clock.
What's your overall feeling about the event and about the impact on the borough staff?
Can you use Superintendent Jinger's comment the other year to Jeff Palm? It would be great if they moved to Sherman's though. No, it's, we know it's coming, we know, you know, the borough staff has four seasons. They have leaf, they have snow, they have Jubilee Day, and they have the spring cold. That's the four seasons that the borough staff has. So Jubilee Day is, is a, is a big thing, we know that. It's a very big tradition for the town. They like the fact that we didn't have it the last two years, but they know that if it comes back around, they're going to be working it. So CH is, is well aware of what he's going to have to do. Barb, as the recycling coordinator, is well aware of what she's going to have to do, the same way Matt and Chief Neff, as the code officer, are well aware. So, I mean, it's, it is what it is. It's, it's, it comes around, it happens, and it goes away. And hopefully Friday morning, the town will smell like french fries.
Is there anything else you need from us?
I did, I want to give you guys a heads up, so there's going to be some, I'm going to, if I get people to interview, I'm going to be kind of pushing them, you know, getting them in here and getting them in, if it's, if it's just a fact of, of looking for the bodies, they have minimal skills that we can use, you know, push a broom, pick a shovel up, stuff like that.
I mean, what?
We are, we are looking at, and this is something, we're going kind of out of the box a little bit with some of the advertising. We've contacted Botec about some of their part-time summer help, getting some of their crews, because they have a landscaping class over there. They have things that we could use people in the parks. They also have a, you know, the public works and stuff like that that fit into repairing buildings and a few other things. They also have a pool of ex-students that are looking for jobs. So we haven't got anything out of that yet, and we don't know how in depth they've gone, but we've gone, you know, and Curtis has reached out to Hack because Hack has some, some environmental classes that may suit him coming down the road. This is a tip of the iceberg. I mean, we've, we've talked for the last six, seven years about, you know, we're looking at retirement of a major chunk of our workforce. It's been thinking about it.
So with regard to Jubilee Day, have we asked the chamber to assist with volunteers to fill some of these duties?
At this point in time, we haven't had to, but this year, we're going to have to. And I had a doctor's appointment at the last Jubilee Day meeting, so I wasn't at it, but it'll be something that'll be brought up at the next one, we'll discuss this. And I know, not to throw her under the bus, but Chief Myers is going to have probably a report for that meeting also. So there's a lot more that goes into this as far as coordination goes than just, you know, than what it appears.
So what about temporary workers? What about?
That's what we're, we have to look at. The one that we use all the time before that we got accounts with, they, they have no workers. Their workers are all gone. So we're shopping around to see what, who else is out there, but everybody's in the same boat. We're.
Well, and another thing too, is I feel like when you're going through the hiring process and labor shortages, et cetera, et cetera, I feel like you can train a person if they have a good personality. So I don't, I mean, I feel like that's sort of what you, what you interview for, so I'm, I'm, I just kind of moves back to earlier. I'm, I was impressed with the, what you were able to get with, anyway.
That's the time mark. I mean, that's the other part, is getting them a call back. I mean, you know, they, they submit the application, but, and we call them, set up interviews, and they don't, they don't call back. So we know that, what those are all about. But there are, there are people out there, and, and this is, we're going to, you, Councilman Booker are going to find out next year as it comes to contract time, you know, what we're paying, just, you know, and the school districts are in the same boat. They can't compete with.
Okay, we, we, Chuy.com and a few others. I, I feel the pain in my.
Yes, they don't. I've had this conversation with Greg Longwell at the school and with Mark Mighty, and they're in the same boat. They cannot price themselves out of, you know, contracts, and, I mean, we're in the same boat, we cannot do that. We can't, 1750 an hour is the max range that, that they gave me in the contract the last time, and I can't go any higher than that.
Well, thanks for hearing about Jubilee Day, I don't want to get too sidetracked here, but, anyway, so that, does anybody have any final comments on it, or, you know, in there? So I'll just real quick run down our, I know you have two words on here, but Chief Neff, do you have anything to add to your report? Would you like to highlight anything from your report?
No, I don't.
Right. And then Chief Myers?
Yes.
Same thing. All right, thank you. That's the end of our main chat and for long words and taking.
Thank you. You have something to add, Mr. Urban?
Yes, I will. So the library report, this is National Library Week, and it was my privilege to have my first meeting with Executive Director Urban last week. Very impressed about everything I didn't know about the library and the services it provides for our community. There are openings at the library, speaking of labor needs, they are looking for two part-time aides to work at the library. They can visit the library website to apply for those positions. But I was, as I was engaging with Director Urban, I realized that as a, as a borough, we, we have a national, in our community, that as we think of ways to not just promote the library, but for people, students, citizens, and people who just need help with the internet, that's the place to send them, that's the place to go. So more we can get that layout, perhaps as a segue to our website discussion, we can do links there. So, anyway, I was very encouraged by that discussion and that meeting with Director Urban. That's the end of the library report. Councilman Anthony, any updates on the school board?
No report this, no report.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the website project. As you know, we approved, awarding the contract to revive, 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 sorry, and we are now working, working with the website advisory team to work on the layout and what needs, or not, code gates, for example, and beyond, that we need for the website to be what we need it to be to serve our community. And just to quote it from you, our team was talking about the website being something that's attractive, appealing, but very functional and easy to navigate. And we have many examples of that from our, our work that we've been doing, and so we were able to give our contractors some feedback on that for questions, the design question that they asked, so. But I'll open it up to any, any questions or ideas that you have as we move forward with this project.
I'm looking at the discussion for the request for high-quality photos, is, I mean, is there a way we could do some sort of, like, contest, like, for community members or something?
I, yeah, we kind of casually talked about that. I think that would take some organizational effort. I think the other option, what there is, is probably some photographers that we may know that we could ask for them to volunteer.
We have been reaching out with, haven't been successful yet in getting someone to, to donate their photos, you know, photographer, but what we are asking.
There was a young lady that was the junior councilperson that did a, and we have a book here, she presented it to council. I cannot recall her name off the top of my head. We can find out and reach out to her. She did a book, photos of the entire borough, and presented it in a hardtopy book to council when she went off to college. So we can see what she has and if she's interested in, you know, if she, if that's what she's.
I think, I think, so I think we should, we should look into that. We really need them right now.
Yes.
Because we need them to get the design process started, and then in the future, we could run a contest.
Okay.
I would also really think it would be really cool if we had on the landing page, like a drone video.
Yes.
And we had discussed that, like, the drone going up and down Main Street and a little bit around, like, where there's, like, just really a montage drone video. But I've reached out to somebody on that, but I haven't gotten any.
You reached out to Flying Monkey?
Yeah.
So he, he does, he was just over here, he was doing, he was moving the driveway.
He lives in town.
Okay.
He lives in town.
Yeah, he lives in town.
Well, yeah, let's go to hold a hand and see what he can do.
Is he the guy that flies over on Drucker Street Night?
Do you believe that?
With the, with the ghost?
Yes, he has, he has a blimp.
Yeah, he has some.
Yeah.
Video, so.
So, so I need to get along with that. Any other comments, questions, input regarding the design of the left page as we move forward? I have a question regarding, rather, the amount of support that staffs, brand of our, aren't going to be assigned at, and with all the discussion of staff challenges. I mean, it's a priority.
Yeah.
But I remember, so what can we do, if anything, to help through that effort to move this forward and just put you and her.
Well, I think once we get, once we get the questionnaires, we, I got the three questionnaires back from yourself, President Miller, and Jenna. So once we get those, I'll, I'll input those tomorrow. Today, I was tied up with a lot of other things, but I want to sit down and get that input to them, and then they can start digesting that, maybe create a mock-up. And then they can start digesting that, maybe create a mock-up, and then you guys will have something to look at, and we can go from there. But Barb is actually, we're transitioning her out of the finance side of things. Danielle's taken over more and more responsibility as far as, you know, the finances go. So Barb is loosening up some of her time. And as a matter of fact, that's probably something that's going to be coming to both council and the authority. We're looking at a hybrid position for Barb involving MS4, the community outreach, and the recycling coordinator position. So I'll be coming with that proposal through the personnel committee. So, but that's part of the community outreach is the website.
Right.
And social media, and social media, all of that is in there, yeah.
There's a lot to do with them historically, with the public outreach and them historically...
Exactly. They all kind of tie together in the setting of recycling. That ties together into the public outreach because she does all of the advertising now for the electronic recycling and all the stuff that we do. So there's, there's assets of, or there's facets of all of these positions that are, they melt together in one place or another. They might be different backgrounds, but, and if we're going to rely on the engineer, which we're probably going to, I didn't tell you that yet, Greg, to do some of the heavy lifting with the MS4 stuff, you know, Barb can do the stuff that's in town with the violations and work with code enforcement and stuff like that. But there's, her main priority is going to be, at this point in time, for the next three months, the website, community outreach, and I've got her doing a file project, we're scanning in all the electronic file, all the files to electronic. So there's, there's changes being made internally that will support all this. So I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about staff support for the website.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Do you have any economic development, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, sir. First, I'd like to invite Rebecca Eric to offer any thoughts she has on the report. Remember, you want to highlight anything briefly before we move into Thursday, I think.
You know me better than that.
I do.
Not even great. Couple of highlights under About Face, the Union Church, we had a meeting last night and I decided to utilize the grant to eliminate the bell. And the bell tower, it's our privilege here and there, so that's, that's nice. Under Business and Property Updates, I met with Noah Snyder, who has Art Fitness, will open in the former dress and pajama factory. Karen's Furniture and Mathis on North York Street, he's being financed by Members First. The business that's in there now will move to the back, the additions. They do most of their business online. We talked a lot about whether the chairs and signage and everything else would remain because that would be an obstacle for him in launching his business when we're so used to it being something else. Nick and Tony Grussey purchased Sidorellis on Simpson Street. A few months earlier, they purchased the Sidorellis in Lemoine. So that's happening. They plan to reopen the back part of the bigger meeting room sort of area and have different events there. Working with Cory Leister, she is already in the county's business portfolio. She has inspired by you, that's where Napa Auto Parts used to be, that's where Battery Warehouse. Coming soon. She's in December 2016. She now leases two of those units. She opened in Marso 2020, and by September she was renting the back unit. She wants two of those, she would love to buy the building. The owner, Mr. Cave, isn't so inspired, but we continue to talk to him about that. She needs more work, so she's going to be going somewhere, all right? And he still hasn't moved in yet. So we continue to work on that. Building Female College. I'm digging into this, I'm holding out hope, but it doesn't look very good. I believe it's been sold. And I emailed the, I guess, previous owner, haven't heard from him yet, and told him that while I was saving my money, I was about three million short on that. And he hasn't responded yet, so I'm going to go in and manually look and see. But it looks like that has moved, that was one of twelve properties across the county that we served up as redevelopment opportunities. I talked with Mike Kushner at length about his exit strategy and what he was going to be looking for to, to sell that property and all. We've got a lot of housing assistance customers, housing trust voucher participants in there, their forty units. I just look at that and see all the opportunities. So not that we wouldn't have that with a new owner, but, and I never give up, you know that. The County American Rescue Plan, fifty million dollars for Cumberland County. Two weeks ago, the County Finance Committee, which I sometimes attend, had a discussion about the results of the survey that was conducted in February. So we saw they presented that, they had a little over two thousand respondents. The survey was a pretty quick survey, very general, and please hit the radio, communications question. Good move, good strategy there. And that scored very high, according to Commissioner Eichelberger. So it looks like the, that round for those grants or loans, however, it's going to be completed, will go out a little bit sooner than anticipated. We were talking about late May, I think it might be late April, early April, before those go out. So we mean focus areas in terms of the response from the, those who took the survey. No surprises there, mental health services, government services, and revitalizing our communities, which is pretty wide open. I know that we, the redevelopment authorities, are looking at two projects, one in Mechanicsburg Borough and one in South Middleton Township, where we'd like to serve up some transformational projects involving selected properties that could use some assistance. That's what I have, in a nutshell. Anything for me?
I think you missed one thing on page one, Massimo's, over here.
Very good, Greg.
Yeah. And he's making a maragna now, that needs to make the next report.
Well, that was in my last report.
Oh, I somehow missed that, thank God.
Yeah, they do some entrees, they do some sandwiches, they have all kinds of baked goods. They're doing really well and really happy to be here.
Thank you so much. Any questions? The, your report about the owner of Drop a Ink Tattoo, Fifty Two Fifty Two East Main, or East Campbell, is that the theme?
Yes.
Or is that the fellow that was in New York? I think his place is called True Self Tattoo.
He, he has his own, well, last time he did his own drop a ink, he worked at...
Gotcha, gotcha.
He's been owning his own shop called True Self.
I didn't, I didn't know there was an additional tattoo department.
Well, I knew that I had owned a drop a ink, the name was Frank. I think I've done him.
I think you're right.
Yeah, okay, all right, cool, wrapped up.
All right.
But, and I also want to add that we got my daughter's birthday cake from Mountainville last night, and it was daughter's birthday cake, and it was heaven weight. Heaven weight.
It's a problem. Thank you very much.
But one question, the grant program, that includes the park radiators?
Well, I'm not the crafter of the, I'm not, I'm not a determinate as to how those would be used. The survey was to help guide the commissioners in what to allow, you know, what the guidelines would be, who could apply for whatever...
I'm trying to figure out if it's...
Right, yeah, yeah. So the survey was a tool to direct that. But it's very good, huh?
Thank you so much for your continued hard work. The planning commission report, normally I was in the planning commission meetings, but councilperson Martin attended in my house.
I did. It was their first meeting since July twenty twenty one, so they approved those minutes. And they did their reorganization. So the chairperson is now Mark Stoner, the vice chair is Bruce Smith, and the secretary is Kevin Dwyer. From what I understand, he's been the secretary for a very long time. There was no reading, there was no public comment. Basically, there was an update from HARB about a certificate of appropriateness to the G-Man and the possible changes to the HARB application. No other reports were given, there was no discussion, action, other than they approved, they were, they were...
Recommended.
Recommended, approved, recommended. They recommended to have Dustin Daimler's True Self Tattoo, but we already voted on that. So what else happened? We talked about the car lot on Simpson Street, and that's kind of seems to be moving forward a little bit. I noticed that the place is all cleaned up and looks real nice, and there's a whole bunch of trucks parked there. I guess he's going to sell trucks.
He puts his higher ends, and right now trucks seem to be the difficult thing to get, but he's putting his higher end bars on that lot.
Okay, all right. And I think that's about it. We talked about, they talked about the Broad Street drainage issue with the new, with the school, and they're working with the authority on that. And that was it. That was about it. And, yep, over there, yep, that's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your attending the meeting. HARB, Councilperson Agerton was attending, she was launching our endeavors. So I attended her stay, and President Miller was in attendance at the HARB meeting as well. So we have a quick, quick overview of the HARB meeting. They had a fairly simple meeting, I thought, and two applications, which, which they discussed and moved forward. So there was a lot of discussion about the HARB process in general. Our manager was involved in that conversation significantly, as were the members of the HARB. There were a few things that stood out to me that I'll just mention here briefly, just so that they're known. There was a lot of discussion about the timing of various applications and processes. Just give it a first, it's ten days prior to a meeting is where an application has to be submitted. HARB has forty-five days after the first meeting where an issue is raised to move on that issue and to submit to council. Council has ninety days to take action from that point. But a building permit, according to UZG, has fifteen days until it has to be taken on end. And that's currently being outsourced to approved codes. So there seems to be some disconnect there because the HARB committee was talking about, that's what prevent things from happening that are not in HARB's, that HARB's not in agreement with, would be to prevent the building permits from moving forward. But there seemed to be an opinion that the building permit needed to be issued prior to HARB having the time to consider making recommendations and Borough Council taking action. And so there was some discussion about a building permit being tabled or held until, until satisfaction of all requirements with regard to that particular project, which means that if, if that interpretation were, were taken, then the building permit would be held until HARB application was complete. For myself, I thought a little bit about that. You start adding ten plus forty-five plus ninety, that can mean a substantial delay in a project, and I think an unreasonable one. That issue was not discussed, it wasn't debated well at the meeting. I think there were other issues that were more important to the committee at that time, but that's something that might be on our radar in the future. Also, there was a bit of discussion, which was a little striking to me, that one of the members of the committee mentioned that they have a lot of people who ask for forgiveness rather than permission of the HARB. And that this is, you see, this is, I'll say commonplace, not the same as the majority. And that there's no enforcement mechanism with HARB. So people just choose to ignore it and operate to the, to the committee, do what they want to do, be told they didn't follow proper procedure, and walk away. And they hear multiple examples of that over time. So that was, that was a disturbing thing. I believe that Madam Mrs. Zosky was talking about the HARB providing him with guidance, and he will take that to my casualty for review as far as how they put some teeth into, into the HARB process. And at the conclusion, we might overdo my takeaway, was that they were going to work on that and slowly move in that direction. President Horn, do you have anything to add considering attendance as well? I'm sure I forgot some things.
That the arrangements may need to be changed depending on the interpretation of the solicitor, and there may be other things that they want to incorporate in that change, so just, we'll have to take a look at that and probably in the future, yeah.
I thought the good news was they were, they were trying to tackle a really tough issue, and they spent a lot of time talking about it, which I thought was really positive. They put, they put a lot of service and a lot of thought into it, and they clearly have, they feel a lot of ownership of the process, which, which was great. So I commend them for trying to tackle a tough one. Rodney, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I think, I think you summed it up very well. I mean, there's, there's some things that I think we can work on to, on the process side, and I think that's the clarification. I know that the previous council didn't want this to be an onerous of it, as you spoke to. You know, an unchecked timeline can be very detrimental to commercial or residential projects. And I think that's why we need Solicitor Cassidy to give us a verdict, yes or no, and then how to proceed from there. Once we have that, then we can move back to, you know, you'll probably refer to the planning commission for them to finalize this, and then we can go from there. So there's a, there's a, there is a process to get this done. I was, I was pleased, they, there was a good give and take. It wasn't a, you know, standing our ground and digging our heels in. It was a good give and take last night, and I think we made a good bit of progress.
Thought so too. Thank you so much. The, the last quick item, which, just for, for interest sake, is they mentioned that there are a number of projects that have fallen under the HARB review that were begun and completed without HARB review and that were extraordinarily public. The one example that was referenced was the old Greenwell Building. Everybody, nobody at, near, near the Greenwell Park. So that building was significantly altered and clearly shifted to come under HARB review, from my understanding of that conversation.
I have to investigate that with, with approved codes and see what was actually done there to modify that building. The last I heard that I was involved in it, it was an ADA issue. The ADA ramps that were involved coming into the front, because of what that business does, they had to have their ADA ramps up the code. If that's the case, ADA ramp trumps HARB.
So there was a discussion about that property and a couple others that were visible, and the complaint was basically having no one at the borough, no one that such a prominent building was being worked on and had not gone through HARB review. So that was, that was the only thing that came out of the, out of the report. Anyway, that was the HARB report. DMP, we need our report, Councilwoman Agerton is not here this evening, I did not receive a report from her, I think, all as well. And we congratulate Dr. Drake on a very successful, that he might get a little bit back, and just want to let you know. So we have the report there. And then, committee discussion on the updated comprehensive plan. Again, Councilperson Agerton is not here. Councilperson Martin, do you have any comments on the comprehensive plan?
I do not.
Any...
Keep it on, on the agenda to keep, to discuss.
Yeah, one of the things that did come up in a, in a, in a thought was that some of, especially some of the newer house people might want to sit down and have a little dedicated time when we have a meeting and get better educated on this, whether it's a small group or whether it's a formal community, but we might investigate that. So President Horn, if you could take note of that. We feel a little bit lost on the comprehensive plan. I'm sure we're not the only ones, but in order to begin to understand it a little better, we need some education. And councilpeople feel the same way?
I do.
Yes, yes. And that ends...
No, we have something, so...
Thank you. And that ends the committee's time. Thank you.
Okay, property parks and recreation.
All right, that's me. So Saturday, we had the egg hunt, and it was wonderful and fun, and there were...
and there were very, very many children there. Um, and the fire, the fire department was a great help. They helped us set up and, and scatter the eggs into the candy and clean up. And they had a truck and the kids got to look at the truck and touch the truck. And I even got to like talk in the little P H system on the truck to announce the egg hunt. So that was pretty cool. And, um, the egg hunt started with the blow of the, of the siren on the truck. So it was really super fun and everybody was happy to be out there. And it was cold, but it was not raining and the sun was out. So it was good to be back after a couple of years hiatus from that. Um, uh, the, the rapport itself actually meets next week, so I don't have a formal report. Um, I did want to give, um, Councilman Bure some time though because I believe that he has some comments from Susan about the pool, yeah?
Yes, thank you so much. I'll try to make it brief. So several citizens reached out to me with regard to the pool and specifically to the slide and to the opening of the pool this year. Uh, in a nutshell, they, they seemed to come up with a little bit of a wrong opinion that council was somehow feeling negatively toward the pool and/or getting the slide repaired. And anyway, without speaking for council, I was able to speak for myself and gather some information to bring to this committee meeting. In a nutshell, uh, this is a little bit of the background. The slide went down apparently in July of two thousand and twenty-one. It was lying there in service for a considerable period of time. Apparently one slide is damaged while the other slide is still functional, but both slides were shut down rather than leaving morning service.
Because of damage, because there's damage to the tower.
I'm sorry.
There's damage to the tower.
I understand that and if the manager would be kindly enough to let me finish. So there is a deck issue as well with this line. Both slides share the deck. And the information that came to me, and I'm not our care person or an engineer, is that the decking could be fixed without a tremendous amount of effort. Um, and the thought was that the decking could be fixed by our own borough staff, um, by the highway department. So, um, that with here is believed could be affected relatively simply. The fiberglass repair, as the manager has pointed out to us, that the slide should not be disassembled. Two entities now have been contacted. The original manufacturer of the slide has been contacted. And another organization by the name of Advanced Composite Products in Harrisburg has been contacted. Advanced Composite Products is a manufacturer of fiberglass. And both entities, both individuals feel they can come out and repair the slide as it is in place and have it open for the season. And not only that, but have it at least a two-year life under repair, if not longer, giving, giving us and giving the rep committee time to come up with a more global solution. I don't know if you caught it, but Hampton just announced that they're putting two brand-new slides in their pool, uh, that was received with great fanfare. I think that we recognize that the slides are a significant draw and, and those citizens that came to me indicated that they felt that the slides were down for the season, of course, it would significantly impact membership and use of the pool. Um, so the deck damage is believed, and it's interesting, uh, that if, if C H and the crew were able to effect a rather simpler welding repair and if the slide, by the last new repair, I'm sorry, by either of these two organizations, that appears to allow that to move forward. The gas amount of repair right now is less than a thousand dollars. Um, and mostly because the product, the material was needed was a six hundred and fifty-dollar purchase and it had to be purchased in a minimum quantity and what is purchased and opened, it has to be used or thrown away because the product does not have shelf life. But for that thousand dollars, uh, the slide could be functional again. The, the money for repair, actually there's a private citizen who has offered to anonymously pay the repair, uh, pay the vendor directly where the, the repair permitted. Uh, and so repair would be done, paid for, and there'd be no impact on the budget here. So Chairperson Martin, that's the, the information that I can make to you and nothing to convey here. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has questions.
So do I understand, Matt? So if I've said you correctly, we have a picture that he wants to pay for and we have an organization that's willing to do the work and it'll all be done before we start. The work would be done as a contract with the borough, but the citizen wants to pay the contractor directly.
That's what he presented to me.
Councilor, do you feel like that would be an okay thing for us to do?
We'd have to look into the strict legalities of the statutes and the municipal statutes. However, I think preliminarily, without really examining who's involved and the contractor, what contracts that the borough has with this particular contractor, it would be okay? I don't want to give you a definitive answer just yet. On the face of it, it seems as though, as long as there's some sort of contract between the borough and the vendor, it should be alright because we're not talking about a gigantic sum of money here. And we're also, also when we have a contract in place, liability applies as well. Um, I just want to be careful because if the funds are coming from another source other than the borough, there might be an issue of liability. So that's something we'll have to look into. On the face of it, seems like it could be feasible.
Mr. Bure, do they give you a timeframe on what the services they could do for formular?
So, that's great, President. Time frame for Advanced Composite Products are mainly on the material and material naturally is being held up a little bit, like everything is being held up. But they, they, I don't, I don't know that they order it. I don't know if they have other uses for it or not because the material that has to be used has to be chlorine friendly. And so it's specific to certain applications. The second vendor, who was the manufacturer of the slide originally, I have, I have no further information other than that person was contacted, went out, saw the slide, said yes to be fixed in place and, and showed interest in doing so to get it open for the season.
Can we get a contract for review?
So again, I didn't want to go, I didn't want to speak for council and I didn't want to move forward on anything. I just collected the information, reported it back to the chairwoman and then I'll have to present the information here. I'm happy to assist further or naturally step back and let the committees take over. I think it's interesting that the record was meeting next week because it seems like there's a good bit of expertise and certainly passion in that organization to be able to maybe get those contracts, provide them to the borough for review without putting any additional, um, work on our manager's shoulders. We don't do a lot on it tonight, as it is.
Well, I noticed that the, the repair is one thing, what we were looking at was a complete refurbishment of the entire structure. Um, the strut, the actual deck repair, we don't have the equipment to reach up there to fix it.
So the deck repair.
And it's, it's not a weld, it's, it's molding it into place. And to get up there, we'd have to rig it and someone would have to climb up with a, with a rigging. Um, that's not, we don't, and even if it was a weld, we don't have a welder that we can get up there with.
So it seems to me the opposite and you would suggest that which, well, it's that person came out of it for the moment, uh, is not a rule enough to probably be correct. But we can take that offline. I think the, the bottom line is that there's a, there's a very potential solution to the problem here. And if there's a group of individuals willing to dog it down, I think the repair might be able to be made by opening day.
Yeah, so I, I was, when I, when I heard from, um, Councilman Bure, I was a little anxious. Um, so I, 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 I guess we need to talk about it at the record meeting next week and let them, do, do I need to suggest that they get a contract from the?
They would have to make a recommendation to council. That they would make the motion, we'd put it on the agenda for discussion. They would make a recommendation to council. Council would be, council is the one that has to sign the contract.
Right.
It's a council decision.
Yep.
But would, perhaps you could propose to them that they designate a member from the board to assist the manager in acquiring the contracts.
Okay.
And then you can collect them at the assistance of the, of the member from the board and get them to council.
That'd be great and we could bring that next week.
A member could have possibly a recommendation by next, by next meeting. When do they meet?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. I would say, you know, engage somebody from the board, have them work with you to get the contracts. The board can discuss it, make a recommendation to council and then council can take action at the next meeting.
Okay.
We do have, it is concerning though, the issue with the decking, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so my main question is how do we ensure that the slide is not fixed? Right? I mean, is there, would, does somebody affect the slide?
I would affect the slide.
Oh, okay. So is this person?
Shut the slide, the entire slide down.
Right. So it's this person whom we don't even know. Um, oh, so wait, they, so the decking has to be fixed by?
There was suggested that the decking could be, that C H indicated that the decking could be fixed, that they have a lift that could access the decking and the decking needed to be welded and that they had the capability to do the welding. I didn't learn about this personally, this is just the information that was provided to me.
Okay.
Could this, could you give me the answer on that?
I know, the decking's not welded. I mean, the piece that came off and loose is bolted in. And to get up there and bolt it, you would have to get in around the superstructure, um, to where the decking is loose. I mean, this is, this is, that was, we had it fastened down with a zip tie as best we could so that nobody was tripping over it. But when the fiberglass broke on the, on the slide, it was just, it made sense to shut the entire thing down because nothing was fixed. So the lifeguard, the head lifeguard is the one who gave me the pieces that came off of what, of the decking up on top.
Is it possible to have C H look at it and give determination to you as to whether to screw it and repair it?
Yeah, I, getting the, getting the lift truck in there is a problem. I mean, we have, that lift truck just barely reaches the lights and this is above the lights where it has to go. And it's in underneath where all the superstructure is. So, um, I mean, if he feels that he can get up there with a lift truck like that, that's, that's pretty impressive because we had trouble getting that lift truck in there in other places. So. I'll talk to him.
Just getting answers from the Public Works Director. In terms of the inspection of the slide, I'm wondering how you would feel about having an independent person inspect the safety of the slide?
If you can find one.
Takes the liability off of you?
If you can find one. This is the reason why we did that, why I went to class to get the inspections is because there's very few inspectors that are doing this anymore. And under the, under the Department of Ag, we have the option to do our own inspection.
Understood.
Who's inspecting? Hampton?
Apparently someone over there.
Who's inspecting? Campbell?
Apparently somebody at Campbell.
Good questions to be asked.
Well, perhaps a volunteer for a nominal fee could come inspect our slide. Just to suggest, I mean.
But they're, they're in the same position. We are, they're, they're.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get into a circumstance, I mean, we're, in this instance, we're inspecting our own work and that. I don't know. A little question.
This is, this is common practice in this, unless you want to have the Department of Ag come in. The class that I was in had municipalities that were doing their own inspections. Yarrosa amusement park in, in, up towards Altoona, they were doing their own inspections on all their slides and all their rides. They, we have to register with the Department of Ag every year and, you know, that's our, that's part of our certification is that we took these classes, we know what to look for on these, so, I mean, that's.
I understand it, it's, it's good, it's good to know what to look for and it's good, it's good experience to have. But at the same time, second opinion's not always a, then.
I'll, I'll look, but it has to be a Department of Ag certified inspector. And there, the last guy was, we have to have it inspected monthly.
But I'm not only saying it's for the borough's protection, but it also is, I think, it's in your interest as well in this particular case.
Okay.
Mr. President, are you suggesting inspection was for repairs that are affected for one time only and then subsequent inspections returned to the borough?
I mean, we could reevaluate that, but yes, that was, that was my thought at this time because this is, this is a special one.
Right. I'm going to agree with that too.
I'd be hesitant to, I'm, if I had, for instance, if Roger was asked to by another municipality to go out and inspect their slide, I would like question the, the liability on him, you know? If he's inspecting it, the agent of us, like, if, if you take that, I don't know. I'm not, anybody which are made there, person come out here.
Yeah, but let them say that.
Well, certainly.
Is there anything you would recommend that they could ask us?
No, he should.
Okay, so, next. I have a time I can play. Oh, yeah, Shady Tree. Any reports from Shady Tree?
Yeah, so, uh, Shady Tree is, um, has made a more firm plan on how to spend their wildcat funds. So the first thing is to, um, take a look in the park at where, uh, locations as to where would be good to plant trees. Um, and then they kind of come up with a marketing piece to that as well. Um, and then they're going to be updating Shady Tree's mission rules and regulations booklet, so it's not the actual, like, form that you use for the borough's tree recommendations, something like that, more informational in nature. Um, but they want to update that also to make sure that all invasive trees are removed for me and stuff like that. Um, and I talked to Roger about the, the, the tree rot, the cut crease thing. Um, but I appreciate Roger here prompt response, um, to get them the information they requested. And, uh, they're looking at potentially doing another tree inventory of the street trees because, um, the information they needed from the old documents they had were, was incomplete, so.
That was only part of what they had before. It was a, a, before that, where there's left, oh, there's an additional tree inventory, but the, the data was incomplete. So they're figuring out the idea of, um, redoing that, so. Um, yeah, and then that's going to be the report for, uh, Shady Tree.
Okay, and E A C?
Can I have a question on Shady Tree? Uh, um, sorry, my, this is, that may. Uh, the tree, uh, makes sure between D N C and the birth church you got. I know it's hard because it is about three quarters dead and it's very low and, and the branches are right at eye level. And at the demolition event, I saw two people, one child, get stuck in the eye with that tree. Before Pastor Connor's death, he and I had talked about that because it was believed that it was on the church side of the line and he was going to talk to somebody in the city department to, to lend that up or do something. But is there anything that can be done from the borough's perspective on that? Because it, it is actually a hazard.
Sure, true. We can, we can go out and, I mean, it was also part of a grant, uh, the tree vitalized grant. There's no planted that tree there. So, uh, we're going to do everything we can to save, they have to do everything they can to save it. They participated with the grant. So we would have to talk to them about maintaining the tree. So very similar to one down the street, um, at Race Street where Race Street was a similar situation. The trees didn't grow up, it grew out and it became a hazard. They need to trim that one up, so.
Yeah, I, I think, um, the tree tags they hang, I mean, they, that could be.
Shady Tree usually, they haven't been out to do anything, so they'll start hanging tags about low hanging branches and bushes that are, are blocking sidewalks and stuff like that. So Shady Tree usually does that themselves.
Yeah, that one needs to be trimmed up. It's, it's, Councilman Bure is looking at it, no, it isn't bad shape. Let's take a look. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, that's my report.
Right. No other questions for Shady Tree? And, uh, Councilman Bure for the E A C report?
Uh, yeah, the natural playground update is basically done at this point. So there's some pick the cables and benches that are just to be installed this summer. Um, and there have been some designs have been installed, which is pretty nice to see too. I'm lucky they made it out there. And then some bluebird houses have been installed as well. In addition to the natural playground update, they had a special guest, Brandon Hubert, who actually used to be on the EAC, and I guess through Messiah University, they're working on some local climate action planning, so right now they're working with KPO Borough, and the, basically they inventory all of their, basically greenhouse gas emissions and stuff like that, and they do an estimate and ways to kind of try to reduce them over long-term periods. So he just came and presented on that, and Cumberland County had a climate action plan as well, something that he did. The earth day right around the bend here, so take a look at their earth day festival coming up. And there are two pollinator gardens, so there's two sections of the wastewater treatment plant, where there's going to be pollinator gardens that will be right till implanted in the same day. I don't know if that has, has that been completed yet?
They did the second spring.
Okay.
Are we waiting for that, the vinegar or whatever?
Yeah, and then the community garden opened in March, so that was exciting as well.
And all plants are full.
That's great. And then that's been a ride for him.
All right, any questions about environmental advisory? All right, so then, we received in our package documents from the South Mountain Charlie Greenway. You guys had time to re-over those? If there's any discussion regarding those documents?
So, we're just for council's discussion tonight, this is, it is only a discussion, we're not making any direction tonight to get back to the garden, but what we can do is we can make recommendations for the next council meeting to then take action on it and vote on what are, what we would consider doing of these six points. And finally, give them an answer, is that we believe they have, they have an answer from us to make their final report, is that correct?
They would like to know, yeah, that's kind of what they're, they're, they have, they have met the requirements of the phase two feasibility. The additional contract was for to investigate the purchase of the unowned property around the sewer plant.
Right.
And that's, we need to close out, to us, it's like money, we, they need to close out in-
Can you get, can you get our board to get our-
Yes.
So, the solicitor is working, I believe, on, far from a connective, he had not been able to scale up the Norfolk Southern. So, I think we should consider, we should, I mean, what we need to really do, my number one, which is consider authorizing borough staff to work with members of the committee to prepare a formal offer to Norfolk Southern to acquire four point four one acres of undeded rail. Railway shown on the rail, railway plan exhibit, the property recently had thirty five five, because uses limited by written shape and footprint constraints. Further to take, believe in this acquisition, because potentially fifty percent of the funding would be provided by the borough who is next to the DCR. So, we've taken the lead on that already, I think we can, we can approve this request with the caveat that we follow whatever recommendations are from the borough solicitor. And the borough will take the lead in that right away, because it seems like it's advantageous to us to do it any, to do it anyway.
Right.
How does the committee feel about that?
No, I, I think that, I'm agreeing with that, really, yeah.
Yeah, I previously shared my support for this idea as well, because it's something we have to do anyway, we might as well make up doing it.
Right.
Number one is consider six thousand dollars in acquisition of funding to match Indiana's DCR funding seventeen seven fifty, and propose funding from Cumberland County, six thousand, and Silver Spring Township, six thousand. Now, we don't know, I don't think, at this time, we don't know that the county or Silver Spring have contributed, that they were likely to, if we say we will, that, that was the argument from-
And I'm a little confused on the DCR funding, too, the seventeen five, the seventeen seven fifty, that was part of the total amount of the grant for the feasibility study, I'm not sure with the seventeen seven.
I think that's the initial seventeen seven, if anything, you can unlock an additional seventeen seventy five with the solutional matching funds. That, that was my understanding from the memo, that.
Okay.
Yeah. So, perhaps your committee, what does your committee think on that, and would the committee consider making that contribution with the, with the contingency that Silver Spring and the county also join in?
So, where does that six thousand dollars come from? Do we?
It would be out of borough somewhere.
Somewhere, it's the envelope somewhere.
But in theory, that six thousand dollars will help us cover the cost to buy that piece of land, that would normally cost thirty five thousand five hundred, is that what, did I interpret that correctly?
I mean, there's gonna be three owners that, pure property in the borough, we can't, but-
Theoretically, we will be spending money on the piece of land, regardless of whether we go this route or not, so it may be advantageous for us to commit to the six thousand dollars, because that might be less than what we would spend if we did it on our own.
But that was what, that's what Solicitor Capesy was gonna-
He was going to approach, right, with, with, basically start the negotiation.
Right, he said, he's seen some bizarre things, he said, he's seen them say, we don't want to let it go, and he's also said, he's seen them let it go for virtually nothing, and there's a right of way issue here. I don't, I don't have enough information to make a decision.
So, they didn't say that we don't have enough information to make a decision, and we don't really, perhaps we don't really want to put a dollar amount to it if we're going to be entering into negotiations. Maybe we just say that we will contribute, we, we say we will contribute and not put a specific dollar amount on it.
I'm not sure, but say. I, maybe, maybe we say that we're in support of the project, but we are waiting for additional information before making a final determination.
But most of the, yes, that's good, without time, without time. So, um, so we're not opposed to number two, but we, but we're, or, um-
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of be nice to own that property, but, oh, right, we don't want to share it with two other entities, do we?
And this is the first time that Cumberland County's been mentioning any of this stuff for this trip, other than, you know, they were gonna go and get the land development grant from them.
And that, I think that would be, that would be the sticking point, is that even though they're contributing, the borough would be, you know, the borough would be the owner of the borough and Silver Spring Township, depending on which township or municipality that particular land is located.
This is all in the borough.
So, it's all in the borough.
And we currently maintain it?
We currently maintain the property.
It would be, it would have to be borough.
Oh, okay.
Other than, other than the part that goes across there, our tennis is property out there, we, we maintain this.
So, there's a little bit of ones, so later on, they are asking us to grant the easement, so we're, I think, assuming that it would be borough.
Which we can commit to that and become good.
So, number three is authorize the borough solicitor, certain is paid out available DCR match funding to review the offer and a potential subsequent Norfolk Southern counteroffer. This would include preparation of the subsidiary agreement to clarify property ownership needs and maintenance between interested parties if the acquisition is successful.
And you said that he already started trying to do that, but hasn't been able to reach-
Well, we're already getting it from him.
We're already given the resources, the permission to do that, so, so we've already done it.
Right.
If Norfolk Southern, number four, if Norfolk Southern accepts the offer, consider taking ownership of the rail right of way within the borough limits, which enjoys wastewater treatment plant property and provide easement to the Cumberland County rail trail. Council can dedicate adequate property for pathway use. So, they're asking us here for an easement for the right of way. Which makes sense, so is that makes sense to the grease and that?
Yeah.
If we own the land and in the contingency that is actually here, this is-
Right.
So, number four is technically agreed to. Number five, consider taking maintenance responsibility for the path segment within the borough limits. The trail pathway is to be designated constructed using grant funds. Responsibilities would include maintaining the trail surface, once constructed, mowing the edge and maintaining signage, and a minimum reward, request that the borough continue to maintain grass areas along the wastewater treatment plant access drag that are currently in the way of our staff.
Yeah, you do that, we're, we're doing that, so.
So.
The one here that I would be careful of is the design and constructed using grant funds, this is gonna be a separate grant.
Not there yet.
So, are we gonna take care of the path and what we're already taking care of, or just what we're already taking care of?
Sound like the path and-
Path, okay.
And the surface.
Of what?
Yeah.
So, make the responsibility for path segment within the borough limits. It sounds like it would be for the maintenance of the path, so.
I believe that's what the NIP set, yeah.
So, what does the committee say?
I, I'm willing, I'm in very, I think we can, what, twenty seven hundred linear feet?
And I mean, in general, most of it were burning anyway.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know. Not something I'd, you'll tell her, to me.
Uh, number six, although no action is currently requested, so no action is currently requested on this, but they would like some consideration as to direction. And round crossing would be required to ultimately connect the pathway to Soldiers and Silverton Road Park and Fuzzery Park. This will require pedestrian bridge under Norfolk Southern guidelines. So, I think they're just asking for our opinion on the rail bridge and if down the road would borough consider giving the necessary approvals for that, and the-
I mean, I guess it depends on, if the boss fifty thousand dollars came in.
The official one should be to be supported by a version in current council at the time. Two thousand.
That seems good.
Yeah, I don't think there's an official action, I mean, action, I hope there.
So, this will go on, we get to the next?
I don't, you know, we're already doing a lot of it. I would say give them a summary from tonight, and ask them if they need any official action.
I think the lab is the big one, they were, they want some kind of commitment, and legally, I don't think this council can commit or the councils to that kind of expenditure, I mean, that-
This is like a ten year plan, right?
I think we can commit to the, to the, or the idea.
Right, right.
But I think the feasibility study is where, the feasibility study part of this is where they develop the plans going down the road, and that, you know, the original scope, that's why I included some of that stuff in there, didn't include, you know, some of this other stuff, the purchase of land and everything else, that's the supplemental contract that we had, so.
So, I'll give you the summary of what we discussed, one through six, and what our basis is, and see if they need anything official from us to move forward. If they do, we can put it on the next agenda, if they don't, if they've got what they need.
All right, if you have any care of property parks and react, if they have any other questions? Great.
Um, personal committee, I think I'll take over for Councilman Taggerton, and we only have one other here for discussion, which is quarter one update on manager goals, and the committee is going to get together to meet with the borough manager on that issue. Could you just circulate your updated goals?
I did, I think I included it.
I think it got lost, it got lost in my-
I thought it was included in the packet, uh. I will, it's not, I'll send it out. I packaged it, I just, I must have put it in, yeah, I did put it in, I'll send it out.
So, just circulate that to everyone, and just for everyone to understand that we are going to, the committee is gonna get together and meet with Roger for just a check-in, and then later on in May is when the, the board major for your mid-year. Do you want citizens to comment, any citizens to comment? Wait, yes, you approach?
Yes, I will do that. I'm gonna say the president, this is a, this is a warning, this is a warning, you also have three minutes. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to make sure we don't get too far up, and I don't get too involved in this. Yes, I'm in this area, over and down the road, Ben Bader has worked with the community for many years, and he's approached software department advisory to be in on that new permit. Sure, after all, I mean, you listen to me, if you make a mistake, it's still, it was part of the original, uh, town of town for the world, comprehensive, resume, permission of health, and before we, before we, inspections, and kind of where the state, you know, new comprehensive address. I'm very, I'm seeing things here, they say that may happen, so, I don't know, project, but it's, it's still to be done. A lot of things have changed, the economy has changed, the world has changed since we've been here for us, and we gotta do that before we can update the zone, so we can work with the council to be able to do some zoning changes and further zoning, if you will, this is what the community should be doing. And that disruption, that's going to take place. The other thing is, I'm happy to see there's a little bit of motion here, and possibly doing some streets in this town. The last one, two years, I've seen the infrastructure that I know. And part of that, I think, has to default on previous changes that we're not willing to, the tax increases, to be able to support the rural maintenance needs of boroughs. And even I said we work to act where, because we, we just have not had a chance, and nobody knows the way the tax increases. But I'm glad to see there's something done, because the twenty three years that I've worked in there, the rail code has not been put on the street in front of the house. We, I'm surprised that in Sipar, that it hasn't been launched through the state, or, for the windshield, to get in somebody's neighborhood, because there was stuff in the, where the car that were put on a dozen wheels were in anticipation of being put on the street. So, maybe, so, to get embarrassed for a moment, because it's been put over. The thing I like to say is, I've been working with Ben Bader over here for a number of years, and he is very lucky to have a head of resource, because Ben Bader is as much about his borough as anybody on the world. He was part of the zone, he was part of the comprehensive, and he was an excellent child, and he never went around and did one of the couple of tricks. Maybe, totally, he's actually, but, okay, you've got, you've got a very nice over here, and you do well to, to solicit his counsel and listen to him, because he really knows what he's been, and he's one of the people in this town, and he really cares about this community. So, I'm glad to see that in the streets, we say, we teach us, we, 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 we have a nice over. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a citizen to comment. Jay Monk, I have a mission.
Uh, I got a clean goat, no, semi-clean goat, it's my daughter, so I will be around for a few hours. My doctor was very pleased, she estimated around a seventy-five percent reduction in give her size. So, the radiation, the cumulonimbus radiation is still kicking my butt a little bit, but for the most part, I'm back full-time. my butt a little bit, but for the most part, um I'm back full time. Um so taking a little bit longer sometimes for lunch just to to rest a little bit. Um and these really short meetings.
Yeah, why me?
No, no, no. But uh no, I appreciate everybody's thoughts, prayers. Um the support that we've got from everybody has been has been great. Um you know, you guys have been very understanding. Uh the previous council also was very understanding on getting me through the treatments and stuff. Um I'm back into my old sized pants. Uh so gain weight. I gotta can't eat like I used to uh when I was going through treatment. So uh but summer's coming, so we'll have uh other things to get my bike out and then you'll see me flying around town on the bike.
Sure, good.
Congratulate it.
Congratulations.
So thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll call on Jane Gregg. Uh I I know that she really, really cares about that square project because last September seventeenth, I saw Benningham out front turning weeds around the fire hydrant. So if you want to do that, you really care, Jane. So thank you. I do.
I don't have anything further.
Nothing further.
No, sure.
Nothing, nothing.